My vantage point, Mr. Chairman.
Move we accept.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Select board meeting minutes of July 15, 2020. Any additions, changes, or corrections to those meeting minutes?
Oh, I should point out that there are dog hearing minutes, but they came up a little bit later than the packet got delivered.
Joe?
So we will submit those in the next packet.
Well, I better make that one go on.
Yeah.
But that's one that you have to be very intricate with.
And I gather from the police chief, first we did get our fine paid and the Mr. Gagnia has paid the vet bills of the respondent's dog, so that's good news for everybody.
Next any orders? Are there any questions on the orders?
There are several sets, of course, from fiscal year 20 and fiscal year 21.
I see here the, there's two different numbers here for the mosquito control.
Yes.
It totals up to about fifty-three thousand eight hundred or so.
Yep.
That's the total for the year.
The total for the year is thirty-six and change. The other seventeen is the third of our four buy-in payments.
Right.
So we buy into the equity of the machinery, et cetera.
That's what I kind of figured. Now, another thing that panned a little bit top my eye was propane for the fire station was two-hundred-and-nine dollars and the propane for the generator for the office here was eighty dollars. Is it just the different sized tanks or something probably?
Yeah, and we just switched over propane providers.
Right.
So I don't know that this is going to be representative of the rest of the year, but they are just in the process of switching over tanks, et cetera.
Could be. There's much difference in the size of the tanks and stuff like that. So, yep. Guess that's good for me.
Any else?
No.
Good, Neil?
Good. Do you have any handouts?
Yeah, do. Am I on?
Not yet.
Oh, okay.
If I can get them around now, I can distribute them for you.
Sure.
Need to sign that one?
Did I miss one?
You do.
John, here's a, these are larger prints from the notice.
Okay, very good.
Come here, Mr. Bush.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. With respect to coronavirus updates, I can just point out again that the town offices have been open to the public now since Monday, July 13th. So I'd say that makes us the third or fourth week, and so far, so good. We appreciate the public's participating in our protocols and socially distancing and masking up. We really appreciate it. All the staff does. We have plenty of gloves, cloth masks for staff, along with thermometers that allow for daily checking of employees before each day's work begins. The state of Vermont has made an offer to towns all across the state to provide enough masks for, I think, a quarter of the population. So we will take delivery of those next week and we'll figure out a way of distributing them to those in need. Stay tuned for more details. In view of the likely need to continue holding meetings with some degree of remote participation for many months to come, I have met with the town clerk, Helen McKinley, the BCA chair, Butch Shaw, and have consulted with our digital tech people at Vermont Digital to discuss Zooming going forward and what the proper equipment to do that well might involve. The key is to have large enough screens so we can see the remote participants and audio and visual equipment to allow for good picture and sound, and a camera to capture what's happening in this room so the others can see it on their end. And so we have received a proposal from Vermont Digital. It's in tonight's materials, and we can discuss that. We've already upgraded our internet service at the town offices to better accommodate video conferencing. Stormwater management, test pits were dug in July, and we've now received a 30% progress report from the project engineer. He will be proceeding with his work and follow-up with the Regional Planning Commission and the town once the design is further along. With respect to the Depot Hill pump station project, you've received in tonight's packet the results of the rebid that was opened on Thursday, July 30th. There were five bids submitted with the bottom line good news that, A, the low bid came in from a responsible bidder, Casella, whose reputation is pretty well-known in the area, and that came in about $150,000 than the engineer's own estimate. The town and the project engineer are now seeking a funding package which may benefit from newly available additional subsidy, which was made available in this new fiscal year. So that might be more good news for the sewer ratepayers in terms of less of a hit on their bill to be discussed and figured out in these next few months. With respect to the salt shed project, the project engineers at Otter Creek Engineering have gone out to bid for the construction of the salt shed project, and the town has gone out to bid on a construction inspection services consultant as required by V-Trans rules. With regard to the construction, there was a pre-bid meeting at the transfer station on Monday, July 27. Bids are due this Friday at 2:00. The substantial completion deadline for that project is November 20th. With regard to the construction inspection portion of the project, proposals were due on July 24th, and the town manager, the highway foreman, select board chair Hank Pelkey, and Derek Kennison from V-Trans are sitting on a committee to review proposals, interview applicants if necessary, and make a hiring recommendation to the select board. Perhaps by the next select board meeting, the board can consider proposals on both facets of the project, the construction and the construction inspection services. So stay tuned for more on that. We have discussed in the past, Mr. Chairman, the town of Chittenden's proposal to reclassify three of its Class IV roads. The town of Chittenden held a meeting regarding its plans on 10 o'clock Saturday, August 1st, at West Road and West Road Extension up in Chittenden. Selectman Joe Gagnia joined me to attend the event. There will be a follow-up Chittenden Select Board meeting on Monday, August 10th at 5:30 at the Chittenden Town Offices. Meanwhile, we've received a letter from the chair of the Chittenden Select Board stating that any change in the road status would not affect the town's access to the roadway we have always used to access town forest and water sources up on Mount Nicwackit. We also talked about this topic at a V-Trans Transportation Council meeting on Thursday, July 30th, and the V-Trans representative also stated that the mere reclassification of a Class IV highway to a trail would and should have no impact on the public's right to continue using the road as they have in the past. If a town should ever wish to discontinue a trail, they would have to go through the same public outreach that has gone on recently on this reclassification. I can point out that at the August 1 event, that seemed to really stir up the proverbial hornet's nest of the folks living up on Mount Nicwackit, some of which are still fighting in litigation over land use issues and easements, one over the other's property in the courts. And given this public pushback at our get-together, the Chittenden Select Board stated they would not proceed with the proposed reclassification of this Class IV road, meaning West Road Extension. Nevertheless, I will go to the August 10th Chittenden Select Board meeting just to make sure they don't do any backsliding on us. Meanwhile, I have done a bit of research about the nature of the ongoing litigation between those Chittenden residents. I just got from Gary Cuffler, a seventeen-page-long court docket sheet showing all the points of the litigation over the last four or five years with kind of an overview of the dynamic going on. It seems that at some point, there was recently talk of a settlement, which may or may not go forward. We just don't know. Paving of West Creek Road north of the Truck Road to the Brandon Town Line and a short stretch of Hollister Quarry Road began with mobilization yesterday, Tuesday, August 4th. Highway foreman Chad Ujier will closely monitor tonnage amounts and will closely collaborate with Wilt Paving to assure that any paving budget authority remaining after the resurfacing of these roads will be put to use on Whipple Hollow Road without spending beyond our budget authority. As I briefly mentioned, a minute ago, Richard Gagnia has paid his $100 penalty associated with the dog hearing order issued in the case of Krakowski versus Gagnon. Mr. Gagnon did present a letter to the Select Board addressed to the board, the town's police chief, and the town's health officer, along with his payment. The Rutland Regional Chamber of Commerce and the Rutland Economic Development Corporation have decided to combine forces and merge, and there's a press release to that effect in the Select Board packet. Finally, I think yesterday or today, the town learned that we had been awarded a $20,000 grant to fund 80% of the project cost of installing stone-lined ditches on Goat Farm, Barnard, and Sugar Hollow Roads, with the town's local 20% share payable with in-kind services, i.e. labor and the use of equipment. So, that's the report.
Comments, questions for John's report?
On these stone-lined ditches, that'll be done totally by our own grow.
That's right. All we will do is buy the stone and maybe some fabric as needed, maybe grass seed, that kind of thing, but generally, we do it all. And this is kind of the latest, best management practice on dealing with certain types of roads that have water issues. And it's, these are all roads that are on our inventory for improvement.
It appears to be a good way to fix it.
Well, you know, the state is wanting the towns to plan and do things in a methodical way, and they wave that carrot of money in front of you to accomplish that.
I've seen quite a few different towns that I travel through. With my business, they're doing it. It's a good thing.
Select board member remarks, Vanny. Steve?
As far as the paving goes, they've got the shim coat from Truck Route to Brandon Town Line, and they're back between, well, about where Tim Giddings lives. So they're probably quarter or third of the way back. So they were moving today. Other thing is, John, you can probably answer this, and I don't understand the whole thing, but evidently there's some money now from the state for essential workers. Do any of our highway crew or sewer crew or any of those qualify for that as anything we should look into to try to help?
I'd be happy to hear more about it from you. We can have an offline conversation about it if you want.
Well, I've just, all I know is there's money for essential workers now, supposedly, so.
There is money that's been made available to towns for several different categories of things, and some had to do with converting employees from one purpose to another purpose or to have folks responding to COVID, also for PPE expenditures, also for things like safety-related signage, which we're certainly going to be eligible for. And we have some guidance from VLCT about how to make the reimbursement claims. Just looking for a little bit more guidance about who to send these canceled checks and invoices to, but I'm told that we have till September 1st for the initial request and that the program is open till December at the end of the year. Yeah, thank you.
Anybody else? Public comment? Do we have any public comments, as you mean?
Hank, it's Butch. I have some public comment.
Now, go ahead, Butch.
If you can hear me, I would like to report on the Board of Civil Authority.
You're doing a great job, Bush. I think we can hear you.
Hello? Can you hear me now?
Yes, you can.
All right. Try it again. So, the Board of, I'd like to report to the Select Board that the Board of Civil Authority had a very successful Zoom meeting on Monday night. We had great attendance from the members, and we learned more about the technology. And the meeting went off basically without a hitch. So, just for your information, that worked very, very well. And we were able to record the entire meeting on Zoom, which can be transferred to the town's computer that are recording, and the public can attend at any time and make public comment. So that's that particular report. My second report is to the inquiry from Select Board member Mills. The current round of essential workers does not include the town employees. It only includes healthcare workers as per outlined in the Corona Relief Fund federal bill. We expect, we're expecting the next bill coming through will expand that, but at this time, it's only for qualified healthcare workers, unfortunately. We understand that there are a lot of folks that were essential workers that are left out of this process, and we'll continue to look at that when we go back in Montpelier on the 25th August. That's my remarks. I thank Mr. Chair.
Thanks, Butch. No other public comments? Let's listen to the round, and we'll go to the discussion of proposed Plains Road solar firm.
Mr. Veve is here to talk about the solar project, and you have handouts on your desk? I just sit here, so you guys can hear me all right. Behind me is a landowner and business representative, Jason.
Justin.
Justin, sorry. So on the 14th, well, first, my name's Will Veve. Myself and my brother were local solar developers. I live in Jericho, Vermont. Born and raised there. We've been developing projects throughout the state of Vermont for the last six years. Exciting opportunity here to work with Justin and Steve, who couldn't be here tonight, on the further uses of their property here on Plains Road. As you know, they're new business owners. They're operating the business currently differently than what's gone on in the past, which allows us to site a net-metered solar project.
Although the building is still that same color.
I'm working on it. I'm working on it. Believe me, I cringe every day I drive into it. So we'll hopefully be able to help change the color of the building through this whole process, because the process that I'm going to go through is going to be specific to the solar development and then how it affects everyone, the butters, the town, and everything that's part of this process, because whether, and just interrupt me at any time if I'm talking too fast or saying something that's already understood, but the permitting process is Act 248, which in some sense streamlines the ability to get a certificate of public good, which ultimately is the governing permit to own, operate the solar facility. So right now, in that process, we're in the 45-day notice period, and what we like to do is get in front of all the affected boards and anyone else that has question or comments to introduce ourselves, the project, and then if there are any questions or concerns, address them prior to the full application going in, because at the point that the full application goes in, there's also a period where people can have questions and comments, and those can be dealt with as well, but we feel it's a lot easier to do it upfront in the notice period and take care of anything that arises. The project that is being proposed here, I put together outside of the 45-day notice and the details that are in there, what is just like a little PDF slideshow to explain what it is, and I can use this to drive the conversation. Just stop me if you have any questions. Basically, what we're doing is redeveloping a portion of the lands formerly used for vehicle storage on the property. The proposed project's a ground-mounted solar array. It doesn't move or have any trackers. It's basically fixed into the ground. The size of the project proposed right now will occupy about four and a half acres of the property, and it will consist of 2,200 solar panels. I think we all know the location, walking distance from the office here. One of the great things about redeveloping a recycling facility like GHR's is its ongoing use and the previous facilities through all of that work has a very large screened aspect. So visually, all of our project is not going to be seen by anyone, because there's pre-existing screening right now that already screens the operation. So I think that that's really important to understand, too, just on the visual side, because we like to make sure that our projects are silent and unseen. That's the best way to do solar. The solar design in the handout, this is a smaller copy than what I also passed around, which is the, basically, the 45-day plan. This is not the absolute plan. This is just the notice plan to take questions and comments on as we finish other aspects of the engineering, which I'll explain. You can see on the design considerations, we're taking care to use the site as it lays, not really doing a lot of grading or moving things around. We're not proposing to knock down any buildings or anything like that. All of the solar panels are situated, again, behind screening and to also not be seen. The height of a solar panel is roughly 11 to 12 feet from grade. So the way that these things are put on racks is if this was a solar panel, and this is a solar panel, they're done in a portrait orientation at an angle pointed towards the sun in rows. So this bird's-eye view that you're looking at are rows of two panels stacked in this orientation to collect the sun's radiance, the solar power. Again, I'm stressing the fact that all of our preliminary designs are well-hidden, and right now, we don't believe that there's going to be any aesthetic impact, and we will be doing a full aesthetic impact as part of the permitting process for the project. The permit process, right now, there is no cost to the town. This is done completely privately. We do all the engineering with various divisions of the state of Vermont and agencies. Primarily, it's the Public Utilities Commission that governs the 248 process, ANR, DEC, and some other local agencies get involved, but because of the previous use of this land, it's going to be somewhat limited. It is a brownfield, so that is one of the reasons why we're able to do and propose a full-size project. The initial work that we're doing right now and the work that will be continued is our environmental assessments, and then that leads into the electrical design, which, as of last week, we filed our electrical interconnection application with Green Mountain Power, which is the interconnecting utility. Once we have the environmental done and checked off, basically, it's a delineation from the state that there's no wetland issues, and we don't expect there to be any back there from our initial assessments. All of this will go into a final package that will be put into the final permit package, and will also go out to the town. You'll receive that as well. And again, we're in the 45-day notice period, so all of the work is happening in conjunction with getting that done within probably the next 45, 50 days, probably, you know, maybe 60, we'll have it complete to be able to file. What will solar panels produce? Basically, it's a renewable resource that gets fed back into GMP's grid, and the reason it can be called renewable now is that the renewable energy credits are given back to the utility. So Vermont's program has been set up that every town and municipality is hosting, in a sense, solar. It's kind of like the map that you have on your board there. Where's solar good and where can it happen? This is an ideal site where it can happen, because it's a beneficial, complementing use and an ongoing operation that also helps clean up some of the old operations that are no longer taking place. And those renewable energy credits go back to the statewide plan for being the 2040 goal, basically, on the being renewable by 2040. And I believe you have an energy subcommittee, but not an energy committee?
It hasn't been active in six or seven years.
All right. Whether it's active or not, each town... Whether it's active or not, each town at the regional level. They show oh, how much solar you have to put in to actually meet the state's goals. So the great thing here is this project, along with the other projects that are on Pittsburgh. I love the good, the bad and the ugly.
You're welcome.
I'm ready for the. Yeah, I've seen them all too many times. For a few dollars more is probably the best, but. And Sergio Leone.
He's Elio Morricone.
Ah, yeah. Alright, so back back to what we were talking about. So this is a really good project, it's gonna be good for multiple reasons and I'll kind of divert here from the renewable energy credits because. Panels produce three things. Tangible and intangible, net meter credits are another important thing that they produce. And they're kind of intangible and this is the way the state set it up, whether you're commercial or a resident. We're gonna produce a bunch of net meter credits. Part of my presentation today is to offer those credits back to the town of Pittsburgh because we like to keep everything local, all the benefits. Because there's other, yes?
We might not be in a position to accept them only because we do already take credits. From a project in Chester done by Green Lantern, I think. And I don't know that we are entitled to more than one set of discounts from GMP. The discounts we get are for town usage of electricity, excepting streetlights. Maybe there's a way to get these credits applied toward our streetlight bills, I don't know if that's changed.
At the GMP level, it comes down to if they're metered or not, but they're pretty strict on the streetlights. The only things that've changed have been usage, so if your usage goes over a certain amount. You can apply more credits based on usage. There's a pretty easy way to suss it out, if you're already in an agreement and there's nowhere else to put extra credits, then you probably may not be able. To benefit from that, but what you will be able to benefit from are the ongoing tax payments. That the facility will pay. And that that's significant based on the state. The state has set up a tax program that values the equipment placed in use. And does a percentage on that and a real rough number is around ten to twelve thousand dollars a year. Gets split between the state and the hosting municipality on a project this size, so that that'll be. Another tax-paying, quiet neighbor that will last for twenty to thirty-five years. Based on the life of the project, so. I won't, yeah, so I won't go into the the benefit side on the net meter credits. Just because we'll be able to quickly, I'll work with you on that and if there is any potential. For that benefit, we can figure it out pretty easily, so we can skip really the rest of that because that. The rest of the presentation goes into the somewhat mind-numbing aspect of how net meter credits work. But with or without being able to benefit the town on the electrical savings side. We already have everything in place to be able to make this project go forward, so. So that it's clear, it's not necessary that the town join, it's just an additional benefit if it is available. I'll stop for a second there and take a breath and see if there's any questions on what I presented so far.
Just want to add that Mr. Vive is also gonna talk with the planning commission at their August twenty-seventh meeting.
Yes, that's correct.
To roll that out as well for them.
Yep.
So a couple of questions you're gonna get down at Rowland Regional when you go there, are you cutting any trees?
So I I want to speak to that directly if you want to get into that right now, now's a perfect time. As you look on the proposed plan, there's a call-out. And I can point it out on the plan that you have in front of you. So. For the project to be the best project it possibly could be. On the shared property line with the town. There's certain trees at certain heights. That if we can come to an agreement with the town. It would benefit the project greatly to remove those trees for shading purposes. Up into the actual shared property line and again, the plan set that you're looking at right now. Is not an accurate surveyed. Plan, we're going to be doing our survey so that we have everything absolutely accurate. But from the on-the-ground work, there are trees that could be selectively. Trimmed on your side that we would like to make an agreement with if the select board so. Thought was a good deal and when I say deal, I mean, we're very open to any type of arrangement to make that happen because. The more we can make the project benefit, the more it can benefit the town on its economic impact for paying taxes.
And are those trees on the northwest corner, northeast corner?
So this is a north-facing plan set, it's the northeast.
Right here?
So if you look at this page or the eleven by, if I can hold up one eleven by seventeen's for you. So. This is due north.
Yep.
Plains Road, this is the entrance that is currently at the project site. This is your shared. Property line. With GHR. And it would be trees in here and trees. Up here. I'm speaking in generalities right now because we're. Also gonna ask permission if we can go on your property and size the trees and basically say these would be the ones if we were to do that and I don't think. Not proposing clear cut by any means, but there is a certain amount of shading that's produced. From these trees. Everything else that's a tree that's on the GHR property, we will be removing for those shading concerns. Does that clearly answer your question?
Well, I'm just telling, yeah, that's. What will be asked down at Regional and the other will be, do you have someone to take the power, I mean, I realize it's going in the grid. But is this one of the projects that needs an off-taker?
Yeah, we will be getting an off-taker.
But you don't have one yet?
Correct.
You'll have to dial again back into ours.
Yeah, I can.
Because eventually you'll end up down at Rowland Regional Planning Commission. Those will be, those questions always come up. I mean, you've you've talked about the credits are gonna go to the utility, so that's good and it is a brownfield, so those are two other things.
And that's what I was telling him, Dave.
But if you can, we're ready and willing to pass.
John Haverstock, we're back in business.
Everybody's on?
Yes.
Okay. So yeah, and you're. Net any further on that?
No, that's no, that's pretty much, yep.
Any other questions?
No, right now, no.
Are there any, yes?
How long is the life of this project or isn't that addressed at this time?
So.
Ten years, a hundred years, fifty years?
The initial. Basic term of our agreement with GHR is twenty years.
Twenty years.
Yep, and then there's options to extend. But basically fixed for twenty years and it could potentially run for twenty-five to thirty years. And it would be no longer than thirty-five years. Vermont's left it somewhat open-ended, but through the 248 process, we have to have a decommissioning. Plan put in place and that becomes issued within the certificate of public good, so basically what it says is that at the end of the useful life. Of the facility, it will be taken down and recycled. And the land will be the way it was prior to us coming in.
With the exception of some missing trees.
Which will grow back.
Right.
Is this, is this the end of the junkyard as we know it?
No. We're gonna continue, continue operations with, we don't do parts or anything anymore, so there's no vehicle storage for parts. But we, you know, we still take the scrap, people's scrap and the scrap vehicles and we're just gonna be. There's a lot of unused space over there that for years was just the remnants of leftover, things were just left. Which if anyone pulls in the yard, you'll see it's it's getting cleaned up as we speak. So we're we're just looking to consolidate that area and eventually move a lot of it inside and. Hopefully put up a hoop building eventually, so everything is is undercover. But we just, we don't need the space that we have. It's just, it's not being used, you know, back when they had the parts, parts and everything, there was a hundred and fifty cars over there where if you go in there, you might. There might be ten cars at one time, but the following day, they're on a truck and out of here, so they don't sit on the ground long.
Utilizing your land better as.
Better, yep, yep. Or just, just a lot of dead space, you know, a lot of dead space.
Am I got anything else? So if there aren't any other questions, what I wanna try to do is work with the board directly on how. A permission would look that would be acceptable to the board to potentially. Selectively clear the trees on that shared property line that caused shading issues. That that is something that I would like to do with the board and see how we can make that work. I don't know as if we need to make any absolute decision today, but I want to put it on the table.
Does it make sense for you simply to go ahead and flag some trees? We'd have no objection to that, right? And then we could all either reconvene or have a committee of the of the board. Talk further about the next steps if you'd like.
That'd be great, if we can agree on that today, we will.
I think a site visit by the members of this board would be.
Yeah.
We need, well, trees marked and, you know, a plan for what it is you want to do.
Should we refer to your survey and maybe some flags of survey boundary?
Yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll do the engineering, we'll get everything prepared, I'll coordinate with John. So he can let the board know exactly when that work is done and then we can set up a time to. Look at the paper plan and then the physical plan and take it from there.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
Great, thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
So leaving it at that, thank you for your time and it's good to meet everyone, normally I go around and shake everyone's hand, so. Air high five. Yep, that too.
You can show us your thanks with the new paint job.
What color?
Well, the fact that it's yellow, it probably will power those solar panels twenty-four hours a day.
Well, I'll, I'll work with these guys on that and in all honesty, if that is something that we can do, we would be happy to make that happen as part of the overall project. Your rollers ready? Well, everybody's volunteers. Have a great evening and I'm gonna leave this on the table and these are my copies.
Thank you very much, good luck.
Have a great day, everyone.
Back to old business.
No, I think we talked about the COVID response already, Mr. Chairman.
Discussion of anticipated repercussions.
Yeah, as I, as you know, we had promised to keep this matter on the agenda until we had decided to set tax rates. Because there was some discussion about possibly adjusting the approved budgets that were voted in favor of that by the voters at town meeting. Given the COVID stresses on people's finances, I should point out that in my packet, in your packet, there's a discussion of. Some contacts I've had with our neighboring towns, it does not appear that I could find any. Other neighboring towns that had decided to adjust or reduce the already approved general or highway fund budgets. However, they're, just because of the passage of time, because of the state's delay with education tax rates. Many towns have postponed the initial tax due date, most towns have several installments like we do in here in Pittsburgh. We had approved, I think, mid-August as the first tax payment date and obviously, that's really no longer fair to people who are gonna get bills. And so the board might at very least want to revisit the tax rates, some towns are doing September, October, November. Some people have tax bills going out even later with later payment dates, that's all an option. Under the legislation passed by the state legislature. There's also decisions to be made, for example, about whether the town wants to take a holiday this year on tax sales. That might be one bit of comfort to people who may be having some difficulty with taxes, that they wouldn't be exposed to a tax sale. But those are the various options before the board and before we can proceed and set tax rates and send out bills, we really need to make these decisions.
Question, John, if we postpone the tax due dates. Does that mean that the town will have to pay interest on money to carry it into that length of time?
That's a good question for Helen, maybe she has a better sense of cash flows and whether you think, Helen, we might need to do any borrowing, which. Can be reimbursable, our interest payments by the state, but Helen, what do you think if we were to postpone tax due date of of November? Would that cause us to be short enough on cash that we'd have to do some borrowing?
At this point, I don't think so, but we would have to watch the spending and notify you if the funds are starting to get low enough. For concern, at this point, I wouldn't anticipate that. What happens is when we have to make our first payment to the school for the education taxes. And normally that our first payment is due in November, based on our final November due date, but if we were to push the final due date out to January. That would push out our payment for education as well.
I think we should hold off on paying.
Whatever you decided, I'm just throwing that out there as a.
Helen, I think we should pay, hold off on paying the schools until they go back.
I could get away with that.
That'd be a lot of money saved.
But I think part of, you were talking, John, that some towns. You know, they're due in August, so now they're making them in September, but those are mandatory payments, ours are optional.
Right.
That's, that's the difference, like Brandon, you have to pay your taxes by those dates.
Right.
And in Pittsburgh, so the only date we would really be moving is that November date if we were to move one.
But I, but I will point out that Helen has already been hearing from mortgage escrow companies. Who say that the fact that we haven't sent out bills is confusing them because many of them do like to pay. In three different installments on behalf of their borrowers, just for their own cash flow purposes, so.
I might also add, if I could, we don't think our system will allow us to print tax bills. Saying August fifteenth if they're not printed prior to the thirteenth, we think we'll have to adjust at least to the day of them being printed if nothing more.
And in the past, we've always given people thirty days, well, more than thirty days for utilities and taxes, so even if we sent out tax. So even if we sent out tax bills this Friday, we'd want to try to have that first date pushed back to give people some time to get their money together.
Yeah.
So I think the rule, the first, the first issue, I think, is would the board like to make any adjustments to the budgets? Because based on that decision, everything else can kind of fall into place.
I don't see any use at this point.
I mean, no, I with, I mean, our tax rate's going up a little, but it's not a dramatic increase. So, but I mean, I think, you know, all of our, whether it's the town clerk or the highway crew or whatever, just need to watch their spending.
Sure, of course.
You know. Do we know what our educated, from the educational side of it? And that's where the biggest portion of our tax. We have no say in that.
Right, and Helen.
Do we know where that's going to be, or that's still up in the air?
Well, we're not going to cut, we're not going to cut town taxes because the school taxes go up.
We have, we have education tax rates that have come down. And I think Helen will confirm that we were pleasantly surprised that those did not go up very much, right, Helen?
Yes, they're lower than we were anticipating from what we have been hearing. John, if you can help me with those figures, I'm afraid.
Let's see.
My eyes are a little blurry. I have eyes not.
Oh, no problem. I'll just be digging on my own if I can. I, I will point out that Joe's absolutely right. You know, seventy-five, eighty percent of everybody's bills in the taxes are going to be based on the education rates. So that's the big kahuna.
Right in the center of that page.
Are we talking, yes, I'm sorry, we have it in tonight's packet.
Yeah.
So if you're talking about the education rates, the homestead rate is one point four three one three. The non-homestead tax rate is one point six seven three nine.
Those are the increases?
Those are the overall rates. And I think Helen was trying to make the point that they were pretty small. As you look at the bottom boxes, it shows this year versus last year. So on education, homestead, the residential rate was a difference of zero point, I'm sorry, zero point zero one eight two. And the non-homestead was zero point zero three oh six. So pretty small changes from the last year to this, this year.
That's a pleasant surprise.
It is. I think maybe everybody tightened their bolts on the education side. So can I, can I glean that the board doesn't feel the need at this point to adjust the budgets such that we can go to the discussion of actually setting the rates based on the approved budgets? I'm here, I'm seeing some nodding heads, Helen. And so why don't we, why don't we go ahead and talk about setting up the tax rates? Helen, do you want to talk a little bit about the grant list and setting up the tax rates?
Okay, I think everyone has the new rate based on the grant list that was lodged on July twenty-third. I'm just having problems with my eyes tonight, trying to read the numbers.
We, we have, we have copied what, we've copied what you've given us, Helen. I can certainly give them to Kelly for the minutes to include as part of tonight's proceedings. You're just asking that what you've presented be accepted by the board so that we can set the tax rates and send out bills, right?
And then you could probably print bills out possibly tomorrow.
Okay.
Tomorrow and Friday.
So in tonight's packet, there is that revised set of tax rates, and the board could simply move to adopt them.
I make a motion, we adopt these tax rates as presented. I'll second that.
Any further discussion? Hold on, please, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no.
Now, the next discussion is whether the board wants to adjust the tax due dates, the three installments, only the last of which has any bite to it in terms of penalty and interest. One way to do it would just be to move the first payment from August to September and keep the mid-October and mid-November dates. Another option, I suppose, would be to push back the final due date. And that's really up to you. Helen, do you have any thoughts about it, one way or the other?
No, I don't know if they want to do three months in a row, which we normally have a month in between. Or I don't know that anyone wants to put it into December.
I'll make a motion that we move the first date to September first, and we leave the other two dates the same. I'll second that.
Further discussion? Hold on, please, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion's carried.
There you go.
That gives people close to three weeks. I shouldn't upset the town's.
So if I understand you, we're going to go September first and then September seventeenth.
Thought it was October.
What are, what were the three original dates, Helen?
The three original dates were August thirteenth, September seventeenth, and November twelve.
Okay, well, I had heard John say October, so I assumed when I did that that it was in October. I guess I should have asked.
I know, because it would be nice to do September, October, November, right?
Well, that's what I was trying to do.
This is, this is redo your motion.
We could do an October fifteenth, and that would be a Thursday and keep with our Thursday late night to be there.
Change the dates from September thirteenth to October seven, seventeenth?
Well, we do Sep, we do September first, October, what'd you say, Helen, seventeenth?
Fifteenth.
Fifteenth, so ten fifteen, and then November.
She wanted Thursdays.
Sorry, I moved and made the changes.
Wasn't on Thursday?
Yeah.
I moved and made the changes.
So why, wouldn't that, I can't see from here.
No, October fifteenth is a Thursday.
September would be a fourth, I mean, a third.
September third, okay. September third.
September third.
September third, October fifteenth, and then November, or whatever it is. November tenth or eleventh, somewhere in there, yeah.
That's the point of the.
Yeah. Well, okay, well, it's dependent on the calendar. Well, we're, John's flipping it, so we can look.
November twelfth.
November twelfth, yeah.
Right.
Okay, so nine, three, ten, fifteen, and eleven, twelve.
Okay, we have a, we have a motion that's already been carried, neither of them. Need to rescind your previous motion.
You want me to rescind my motion? I would like to rescind my previous motion, and I would like to change it to the due dates being September third, October fifteenth, and November twelve. Everybody? Okay, all right.
Okay, second, you're second, Joel?
I'll go with it.
Second.
Second.
Further discussion? Helen, please say aye.
Aye.
Everyone's motion is carried, the other one's rescinded. We're all set.
And while you've got Helen.
Let's go into the election.
Helen, do you want to give us an update on BCA and election planning, or Butch, too?
Sir, Mr. Chair, Mr. Chair, may I just, please, inquiry? May I ask, because we don't have numbers in front of us, what the tax rates are, the town tax rate and the education tax rate for the town of Pittsburgh? I don't think the motion made by Member Mills stated those rates.
Okay. Well, there's lots of numbers here, Helen, maybe you can help us out.
I think you're going to want the total residential tax rate.
Okay. The total residential tax rate, and you can follow along if, if I'm right, Helen, for twenty, twenty, for twenty twenty-one, is two point zero six seven nine. The total residential tax rate with Village is two point one zero three eight. The total non-residential tax rate is two point three one zero five. And the total non-residential tax rate with Village is two point three four six four.
Okay, and then, and the town tax rate, John? For the town budget.
I guess I don't understand your question, Butch.
They gave me the education tax.
Oh, the, of the.
No, we gave, he gave you the total, Butch.
I'll give you the total.
Education and municipal.
What's the total municipal?
If you want.
Okay, that's the total tax rate for the whole town, education and tax.
That's right. If you want the total municipal tax rate, that's up at the top of the chart. Total municipal tax rate is zero point six three six six. The total municipal tax rate with Village is zero point six seven two four.
Okay. Thank you, I don't have a chart in front of me, John.
No, I understand. I understand.
Okay, we all set on that?
Can you send me a copy?
Yes, yep.
Those want to.
Oh, Helen and Butch, we're going to fill us in on BCA and voting.
Yep.
But I know.
Okay. The final stage is the planning for a drive-through election on August the eleventh. We're saying we'll have a phone set up so people can enter on the regular, opposite side of the building. So we have plant near the side door, people will be able to drive it in. We check out the check list, quicker ballots, and proceed out back where they can park. The locker ballot, we come around to the upset, where they'll be able to put the ballot into ballot boxes. We will have BCA program to take ballots from the ballot box and run them through the escalator as needed throughout the day. Currently, we have had applications for approximately three hundred and fifty absentee ballots, and we have about two hundred absentee ballots in town. We have not started running any ballots through the escalator at this point. What am I leaving out, Butch?
Helen, I think we've got it. You, just, just so the board knows, you are authorized to start running ballots at any time you'd like to for this particular election and for the general election. We're following the rules that's set forth by the Secretary of State as closely as we can. And I think, I think we've got it covered. We have limited space for candidates to be on, on the premises that day just because of space. Helen, I think you've asked the, the police department to be available to direct traffic if necessary. And I think we actually don't know where we're going with this to the board. We don't know what the demand's going to be. I suspect it's going to be fairly heavy for this election. So we're, we're kind of in uncharted territory. The, the Board of Civil Authority has spent some money to make this happen, and I suspect we will mirror this for the November election also. And we believe, and I, we're, the board is looking into this to get a confirmation that these extra costs will be, will be able to ask for reimbursement through the FEMA portion of the COVID relief funds. So we're hoping for that, but we're, we're going to try and track that down a little bit and, and see what happens. Otherwise, we're going to blow the BCA budget right out of the water. And, and with that, I think Helen's got a, a great plan. She's worked very hard on this. And we'll see what happens. We'll know better on the twelfth of August.
Butch, are we looking at grievances?
We currently have three grievances. Helen and I are going to work Friday on getting the letter out to the, the appellant outlining the procedures for a Zoom leading hearing, which has been authorized by the legislature to, to have these hearings all on Zoom. We're currently struggling with paper evidence presented by the, the assessor and by, by the appellant, but we think we have a handle on that. And we're prepared to go forward with this Zoom piece just, just because we just can't get enough people into the, into your room there, the slideboard room, the conference room, that, that would need to be at that meeting. So I'm sure we're going to disappoint some appellants, but that's the, the way of the world today.
Great, thank you.
And I guess that, that's where we are right now, guys.
That's a very good number, three.
Yep. All right. Everybody got anything else on that?
No, we could probably give Helen the night off if she wants it.
We'll give Bush the night off, too. Bush has got to go and do a le, election hearing.
Right.
Okay, you guys, thanks.
Thank you.
Next is the discussion of cops grant.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, as you know, we've had what I would call a flirtation with the town of Proctor about whether they'd like to have a relationship. And ultimately, when we asked the town manager in Proctor to suss out whether there's a majority on the Proctor board seriously interested in making a change to their policing through the Sheriff's Department, we exchanged a bit more information, and they decided, no, they'd like to stay with the Sheriff's Department. I should point out that maybe part of the reason is because there's a new sheriff, and maybe they want to give him the benefit of some doubt.
A new sheriff in town.
New sheriff in town. We did let them know that if they'd like to have the conversation down the road, we'd be open to it, but for now, it looks like a dead letter.
This is the second time we've had that conversation.
Yes, we've had, in the past, feelers from both Proctor and even West Rutland, all of whom have expressed concern with the quality of the services from the Sheriff's Department. But there you have it.
Not sure we'll waste much more time on that.
I know, I was under the assumption they were all on board to begin with, which is why they reached out.
She only spoke for herself and one other board member, and she didn't quite know how many others she could bring along. And apparently, it turned out not to be very many.
So now, this money, should we, because we can hang on to it for a while with no penalty, correct? The grant.
The grant. I, I don't see a need for the grant since we have no desire to expand the size of our police force.
I know.
Well, I guess, all I'm thinking is, I mean, Warful's no spring chicken. At some point, he's going to retire.
We're not going to add to it, we're just going to replace him.
What's that?
We're not going to add to the police department, we're just going to replace him.
Right, but I'm thinking, would it behoove us?
I'd be happy to have a conversation.
To train one of our, use this to train an officer?
I'd be happy to have a conversation with Chief Warful about what his plans are. He'd like that feedback. I do think that there will be a limited period of time during which we need to tell the cops people. The original deadline to notify them one way or the other was, I think, August ninth. And we were told we could easily get an, an extension, which I know they were working on. I don't know whether that proceeded, given the news from Proctor. But I'd be happy to find out how long we would have to make a decision on the grant and in the meantime, have a conversation with Chief Warful about his plans, if you'd like.
Well, I'm just thinking, one way or another, at some point, if, if out of this, we could get training for another officer to bring them along. And two, for all, I mean, in my opinion, if Proctor's, Proctor's saying no right now, that's fine. We, we did this work, we did in good faith, and, and they don't want to do it. That's their choice. But we've done all this work. If there aren't any penalties in keeping this money locked up for us, at least as long as we can, because for all we know, come July, they're going to come back and say, well, no, we don't like the sheriff. We need you. I don't think we should have to go through this process again. I don't think we should have to go through this process again, just because we sent the money back, if we can keep it with no penalty. What I'm saying is, we just keep it locked in as long as we can, just in case.
I'd be happy to look into that, whether we have that flexibility.
That's fine.
Because from what I understand, it was a lengthy process to get this.
Yeah, I'm sure it was not easy. I saw them doing a lot of work to put it together.
Yep.
So...
Okay. Sidewalk.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, not much to report, other than the fact that V-Trans did not want to authorize the Dave Mills approach of simply resurfacing the existing sidewalk because to their thinking, that didn't create the delineation that a curb would. So kind of running short of options, I've asked Wilk if they would re-quote their original project with the, perhaps the engineering design benefit to give us another price for asphalt curbing and sidewalk. And that's the last loose end out there that I'd like to hear from before I come back to you. The other option would be to rebid it if you were still interested in the project. I think that's, those are the options. We have fewer and fewer.
I thought we did print up, rebid.
We did not. But we did have a quote from several years ago from Wilk. Now we know a lot more about the project's scope and exactly what's required by V-Trans, and I'm hoping Wilk will quote us based on those numbers, and maybe that's the basis to go forward. But I won't know until we hear further from them.
I mean, there's, there's asphalt curb on the south end of that. It's been there forever, and it's still there.
That's right.
So, I mean, and if, if we wanted it to last 50 years, I get it, we need something different. But, you know, even if it's 15 years by the time they get that, I would think it would last that long. And if it gets nicked and there's a hole in it, we patch it.
Right.
You know, versus spending $100,000 of our own money to do something that's going to be torn up. That's, makes no sense.
So we'll chase down a response and follow up with you.
Okay.
How about broadband grant?
Yes, you remember that we signed up, along with the Regional Planning Commission, to seek a study on broadband, broadband grant access to communities who need better internet service? That was awarded to the Regional Planning Commission, and they're moving forward with their study. Meanwhile, Brandon has already gone to the process of adopting a CUD, which is basically the next step in the process of, of moving forward. The, the folks from the Regional Planning Commission say we can either follow Brandon's lead now or we can simply await the results of the study. They're not trying to push us one way or the other, but I get the impression that maybe they would just assume the towns hold off until we see what the study says before we commit, although they have no objection to us joining Brandon if you wanted to do that. With COVID-19, there is kind of more of a fast track to get this approved without a town needing vote on it. The board itself has that authority. And if Butch is still on, maybe he could tell us what his thoughts are on that. Are you still there? You still there, Butch?
I appreciate the question, please.
Yeah, the question was whether to move forward now or later on the CUD. Brandon's already gotten their designation, but we're told by the Regional Planning Commission that there's no particular rush to it, that we might want to wait to see how the study comes out first.
So, kind of a, more of a personal opinion than a legislative opinion. I, I understand the answer you've got, you received from the Regional Planning Commission, and that's the cautious approach, and I appreciate that. However, I, the current eligibility for CUD without a vote of the town, we now give the select board the authorization to become a member of a CUD and forward with it, under the governor's emergency order. Should that emergency order end prior to the Planning Commission's completion of their study, then you would have to do a townwide vote, under, under the current climate with the governor's emergency order. So that, the, the bill that the legislature passed is based on the governor's emergency order. And what happens after that, I, I can't tell you. So if the board is so inclined to be a member of the CUD, I would say sooner is better than later. You can always back out. And I, and I personally can't see how the study won't say, this is a good idea. We need to move forward on this. It's the only way we're going to reach our last mile of many of the citizens in Pittsburgh.
So now...
So with that, with that said, Butch, maybe what we ought to do, if the board members are interested, is we could tee this up for a select board consideration at the next meeting and take action on it, take advantage of the governor's emergency order, and do it in a less, less cumbersome way.
Yeah, I, I agree, John, and that's going to give you a couple of weeks to see where the RPC lands on their study, too. So it's a, that's a win-win. I wouldn't suggest voting on it tonight, for sure, but a couple of weeks of, of fermenting might, might produce some, some good results for you.
So now, this CUD is composed of whom?
So far, it's just Brandon.
CUD?
Yeah.
It's what a cow chooses. It's what a cow chooses, Butch. But anyway.
So currently, it's open to any towns within our, our district.
No, but as far as, is it just plain citizens? Is it select board members? Is it planning commission members? Who, who, who are the people that take part in this?
The, the town becomes a member of the CUD if I've got that correct, John?
Yeah, it's like, it's a grouping of municipalities working together.
Oh, so it isn't a board, it's an actual, just towns. Okay.
Communications, union, district.
The vision I see is then you would appoint as other, you do with a planning commissioner, or you do with the solid waste folks that be on as members of the board of the CUD.
Okay, all right. That's, yep, okay, that makes sense. I just, I couldn't envision exactly what it was, but now I understand.
A CUD is a communication union district allowing two or more towns to bond together as a municipal entity for means of building communication infrastructure together.
So it's like, it'll end up, like for Rutland County, it would end up being like a mini RPC?
Yeah, or like our mosquito district. That's a municipal entity, too.
Okay.
Yeah. I, I would say more similar to the mosquito district than the RPC.
Okay.
So if you'd like, we can put that on the agenda for the next meeting.
Let's do it.
Yep, okay.
Hey, we got a couple of right-of-way permits.
Uh, yes.
First one, sorry. Go ahead.
We have two right-of-way permits that are pending. One from the Kimbells and one from the Falks. And the Kimball one is to be done. The Falk one is one basically to approve after the fact, having, having already been installed.
Better to ask for forgiveness than permission.
Chad Ujer has looked them both over and set the usual stipulations that water be kept away from town roads.
Did he have any recommendations or...?
With respect to Kimball, he's requesting that they install a 15-inch culvert and shape the driveway so water does not run into the town road. And as to Falk, there's already an existing access to his land. The homeowner replaced the culvert and added gravel. That's documented by Chad. He points out also that in tonight's packet, the driveway access permit from Doug Falk is on Sugar Hollow Road across from the Bowen property at 861 Sugar Hollow. There has been an existing access used for the land by the previous owner. That was Peg Armitage's property before she sold it, prior to her death. She looked, he looked through his files and could not find any older driveway access for that property. And so this is viewed as a first-time application. The Mr. Falk updated the driveway a couple of years ago with gravel and a new culvert. The current drive is acceptable.
I'll make the motion. We accept them.
Both?
Obviously, the road foreman is inspecting them and approving them.
And now you approve them both?
With the conditions, Joe?
With the conditions that he's...
I'll second that one.
With the conditions he's asked for.
Would you say aye?
Aye.
I'll say no.
John, I'll need those one. I'll need addresses and everything.
Okay.
Pass them over.
No, okay.
Next is consider seeking, seeking grant for leaf blower.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, we've received word from the Regional Planning Commission of the availability of some money through grants and aid to assist towns in purchasing equipment to make their operations more efficient, more successful. In their email, they attach a list of half a dozen or more types of machines that might help highway crews do their jobs better. Everything from roller compacters to leaf blowers to hydroceders to jumping jack compacters, shoulder discs for road shoulder work, hay bale shredders, and stone screeners. And these are all projects that they estimate, or, or equipment that they estimate to have a, a cost of between $5,900 and about $8,000. With this, the Regional Planning Commission letting us know that the state's willing to pay 80% of the cost of such items if the, any towns would like to go ahead and purchase those. I tonified our highway foreman of this opportunity, and he said that he had an interest in purchasing the leaf blower. In his memo, he says it would help us keep our road shoulders clear of leaves for fall grading and help, would, would help reduce the time of use for the leaf vac. It would primarily be used in the fall, but would also be beneficial other times of year, such as clearing roads of debris in spring or summer. He also expressed some interest in the hydrocedar, if that was Plan B. It would eliminate the need for mulch hay, and the new seed usually grows in faster and stays in better than the straw blower. Both would be useful. With that, I reached out to nearby towns to see about maybe sharing a couple of pieces of equipment. That would drive our local match even lower. I haven't heard back from any other towns interested in that kind of a sharing or swapping arrangement. So I think what we're looking at is a cost for a leaf blower of about $7,000 with a local match of about $1,400.
Well, this is a lot of, much would pay for that vacuum cleaner we've got that apparently doesn't do much good.
Well, I don't know, I don't recall the cost of it, but as I talked with Chad, he said the leaf vac definitely has its uses, but in terms of the blowing of the leaves, the leaf vac is not as handy as the leaf blower itself would be. They have used the leaf vac to collect leaves, and, and this would be blowing them off the road in a, in a smoother operation than we do with the leaf vac.
It seemed to me at the time that the leaf, the leaf vac was a good piece of equipment, but they're more designed for if you've got curbens and you're, you don't want people burning the leaves side of the curb when you go along in the towns and suck up the leaves.
We bought that unit used from Putney.
I bought it used and, and I've had to have it, but I don't, I never, I don't, I don't think they've made much use of it.
If you'd like, we do have time. We could certainly have a conversation with Chad. He could probably tell you better than I can about what his reasons for using it.
You don't, you don't. Do you have a cost on the hydrocedar?
I do. It's, um... I think that was 1,500, too, would be our match, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, 1,500.
Is that what it said?
It's a damn shame that we don't share some of this equipment with other towns.
Well, I thought it would be pretty slick to buy both and have one town have it and just swap it as needed because these are only used for certain times of year, really.
Well, really, and I know now's not the time to be spending money.
Well, yeah, I mean, I guess, I don't know. I, I would need to listen to Chad as far as this blower thing goes.
Yep.
A hydrocedar, that's, I mean, you're going to be saving money with a hydrocedar because you're not going to have to buy the hay. There's a lot of labor involved, handling the hay, time, et cetera, et cetera. The leaf blower, I don't know. He's going to have to sell that to me. The hydrocedar, he could sell to me a lot easier than the leaf blower, myself.
Why don't we settle that for a conversation next time? I just didn't know that we would need Chad on it. I'm happy to have him here.
The town amended and the town of Rutland bought a used chipper. And they put a little money into it and they share it. And I advocated that on several things over the years. Sean Erickson was not too acceptable to sharing with anybody. He didn't at least...
Problem with the chipper, Joe, was that when you have a windstorm, everybody wants the chipper now.
Wow.
With a hydrocedar, you can plan. With a leaf blower, you can plan your operations and move it a week or two, one way or the other. That's, that's one argument, anyway.
See, I mean, I guess, and I'd have to look at the vacuum, but what it's sucking in, the vacuum's got to blow out. Why can't they blow with the vacuum?
I asked that, and apparently Josh Towne has lobbied for that, and Chad had a reason why that couldn't be effectively done. But let's have Chad talk about it.
Let's have him explain it to us.
Sounds good.
Okay.
Good.
You town policy prohibiting acceptance of late applications for open town staff positions?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, several years ago, when we were hiring a highway crew member, we had a late applicant that looked attractive, and the board decided to allow the interviewing to go forward. However, not without adopting a policy that in the future, we would not interview town position applicants who had submitted applications after the published deadline. And in this instance, for the rec director position, we had received 12 applications, two of which came in after the deadline published. One via email and one with a walk-in, a day or two into the following week. And so I've been working with the rec director hiring committee, and of course, they'd like to know, are we going to consider these applications? Are we going to, uh, to actually ignore that they exist because they were submitted late? How should we move forward? And I told them of the existing policy, but I also told them that I would talk to the select board and ask whether they want to maintain that policy, given that there's been a little change in turnover in the select board since that policy was adopted. And that's what I'm doing now.
Especially for filling Randy's position, which is such a vital role. I think it's important that we see as many candidates as possible. And how, how late were they? Couple days?
The deadline was Friday. We received an email submission, I think, over the weekend. I don't know, I recall if it was Saturday or Sunday. And then the person who walked in came in either Monday or Tuesday. So it was not, neither, neither of them were very far late.
Being a little late is like being a little pregnant.
No, stop.
Either or, you're right.
Okay, I guess...
I just know we have a lot, we often, for different things, have a hard time even getting feedback. It seems like to put a, put... getting feedback, it seems like to put a, put, to put a wall up when, you know, and keep us from seeing everybody that's available would not be the best idea.
Well, I agree with Alicia, I guess I'd like either Hank or Joe to explain, 'cause obviously you were here when that policy was put in. What was the reasoning behind that policy?
I can't, 'cause I voted against it.
You voted against it?
There are meeting minutes in the packet, and there's not, they're not terribly detailed, but, um, basically Dave Trombley felt strongly that we shouldn't allow people to interview if they missed the published deadline, and there was a three to two vote with, I think, um, Hank and Jane Cornell on the losing end of that vote.
It's probably on the end of a winning vote.
What was that?
It's probably on the end of a winning vote.
I know, can I make a motion that we rescind that policy?
Sure can. That the motion?
Yes, a motion to rescind the policy of late, accepting late applications.
I'll second it.
The only thing is, if you have a set of rules and then you don't follow them, yeah.
No, I, I...
Go ahead.
Well, there is something to that.
And, I mean...
Perhaps you'd like to adopt the changed policy, but authorize the hiring committee to assign any weight they want to, to the lateness of the application.
Sure.
If any.
It's like when we send out a contract, we have a right to refuse. We reserve the right not to accept any bids, and sending a hiring, we should be allowed to accept all bids, regardless when they come in.
'Cause it's for the benefit of the town to get a good applicant pool.
Oh, right, right.
No, and I, and I get that, and that's, well, like Joe says, rules are rules, but again, you aren't talking, you know, if, if it came in at 12:01 on Saturday versus 11:59 on Friday, I mean, there, there's a point, and like you said, the other one came in Monday morning, so it's not like they were weeks late.
And plus, it's crazy times right now, people might, might not have seen, you know, have seen the, uh, the ad.
Um, before you vote, if, if the folks prevail in the vote here, would you like to give any guidance to the rec committee as to how they should deal with these, or just leave it to the committee?
Leave it to the committee.
Leave it to the committee.
Are there, did they already start interviewing?
No, we're gonna discuss that next Monday at 3:00. By the way, we, I'll give you a little update when we're at it.
These committees should have guidelines to follow, and that's where this comes into play.
And maybe what we, and maybe this is, 'cause it's, I guess with my face covered, it's hard, harder for me to hear because I can't read lips. Maybe what we need to do is just let the committee, we keep our policy, we let the committee know this is our policy, but we have no problem with them interviewing these people if they feel that it's okay to do that.
Well, if you maintain your policy...
They can't do it.
You can't do them, okay, all right, okay.
Is there any recourse that somebody might have that, I mean, are we setting ourselves up for...
Something in the future.
Any trouble of any kind by doing, by allowing something like that to happen? That, you know, you're, you're almost opening the door for...
Well, we have the right to change the policy anytime we want.
What are you worried about, Joe?
Well, I'm thinking if somebody comes in a day late and, and somebody else would've had the job, do they have any recourse for the damage that...
Well, the policy, we have a, we have a date, we'll also accept up until the evening before we, oh, vote on it.
That is why, when we put up a piece of equipment for bid, you reserve the right to reject any and all bids.
That's what he said.
Right.
How about when he said that, Joe?
Because the ultimate, the ultimate beneficiary of our policy should be the town.
Right.
Right.
Exactly.
And I've got into some battles over bids that were munked with, I'll call it.
'Cause the town reserves the right to reject or to take...
Were awarded to somebody that come in late, and I know about it, it was just, it wasn't intended that I would know about it, but it just happened that I did, and they had the backtrack, or they'd have had a lawsuit down there. And that was a town in Sherburne over a, a big loader.
But when you, when you, when you don't, when you don't accept a bid, that's dollars and cents that are easily quantifiable as damages. Here, whether we decide to interview you or not, that's just one of hundreds of points of decision-making between taking an application and ultimately hiring somebody. There could be lots and lots of other reasons why you don't hire someone other than simply his, meeting his deadline, or, so I'd say, I'd say it's remote, that we'd be any, facing any liability.
I hope not, but it, it just raises a, raises a wrong collar flag, that's in my mind.
Any further discussion on the motion in a second? Would you say aye?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
I was opposed?
No.
Motion carries three to one.
I will let the hiring committee know.
Butch.
Butch!
Ali would be a good one to get an opinion from.
Hello, Butch Shaw, are you there?
Huh.
Butch!
He gets sick of us.
Well, no, he's like...
You know, he was calling for us.
He was calling for us, and then he left.
It's like he put the phone down and forgot he's still on speaker.
I don't know.
Okay.
Okay, let's move on. Next one is, consider accepting the letter of resignation from Mr. Crossman and making an appointment to Recreation Committee of Jill Blanchard.
Yes, Bill has said that due to a new job, et cetera, um, he'd like to submit his letter of resignation from the Recreation Committee. It so happens that about the same time Jill Blanchard let it be known that she would be willing to serve on the rec committee. Uh, everybody I've spoken to in, in, in light of Jill's offer has expressed enthusiastic endorsement to the select board appointing her to fill that spot. With the possibility also of expanding the committee by one to also involve Randy, he's gonna think about whether he'd like to be a member of the committee as we move forward and hire a replacement.
He has been asked so if he's interested?
He has, yeah.
'Cause that's a, that'd be a great idea.
That was a Rob Ketchum idea, very good idea.
You make a motion?
Yep.
I make a motion that we replace Mr. Crossman with Jill Blanchard.
I second.
Well, I wasn't quite...
Oh, sorry!
And then, and then if Randy chooses, that we expand it for one more person. Now I'm gone.
Now I second.
Further discussion? Would you say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no?
Great.
I'll let Jill know, thank you. This is update on Recreation Director recruitment effort.
Yeah, we've talked about that briefly already, but I can tell you, we do have 12 applicants, many of which are quite strong, and so I'm very enthusiastic about our prospects, as is Randy, for example. And, um, we will be meeting Mon, a second time, Monday, the, um, 10th of August at 3 o'clock here, to discuss among ourselves the rankings, we've assigned the applications, that's been our homework, and how many of these folks we think merit an interview. And then we will schedule those interviews, and we will have further updates for the select board.
Great.
So now, how, how does this process work? You guys do the interviews, and you, do you narrow it down, and the select board makes the final?
No, it's ultimately a town manager decision, but I like to embrace others and work collaboratively so that we have a consensus choice, I'm hoping it plays out that way. In the past, it seems to have done that, we have a good committee, people kind of gravitate toward the same person, and so I'm hoping we have that again.
Okay.
So would we be able to see any of the applications at all, or is that just gonna stay in the committee?
Uh, I'd be happy to share them, but I think for now, we ought to leave it with the committee's hands.
What'd you say?
I think, I think for now, we ought to leave it in the committee's hands, I've expressed, I've already expressed to them the importance of confidentiality because of hurt feelings and small town and that kind of thing. We all benefit from having those people keep that closely held for now.
Yep, no, that makes sense.
All right, review of Depot Hill Pump Station replacement bids.
Yes, this is perhaps a matter of greater interest to the Water and Sewer Commission, but because we will be asking you all to approve a big check in the future, I wanted to give you the update from John Kirin, our project engineer on this Depot Hill Sewer Pump Station replacement project. He has pointed out that we have, in his letter tonight, um, a good collection of bids, five of them, the low bid having been submitted by Casella Construction, you know, which is a well-regarded firm, and their, um, bid came in about $150,000 lower than our engineer's estimate, which is very good news. Um, we still are gonna be, um, hoping to sign a, um, contract, um, once the, John Kirin is done, you know, checking on all the background information it needs about Casella and its bid, to confirm that it still, uh, looks like the best and most desirable bid, and then he will present that to the Water and Sewer Commission that will ultimately decide to award the contract. Um, I should point out, this is not the entire cost of the project, of course, there's engineering costs, and there's a separate add-on project of about $100,000 in terms of automation at the wastewater treatment plant. But this is the bid for the lion's share of the project, which is the replacement in place of the two Depot Hill pump stations.
Okay, so this is, I was gonna sort of ask that question, because initially, what, year and a half ago at town meeting when we voted on it, it was close to $900,000, if I remember.
That's right, that's right.
So how does this bid, what does that do to that $900,000?
It's gonna be substantially less than $900,000, um, because we've reduced the scope of the project. Remember before, we were gonna do one massive pump station at the bottom of the hill? We decided that was impractical, let's just replace the two pump stations in place, which also means having to lay less pipe up the road. So that's reduction in the scope of the project, uh, and so if you add the 500 to about, um, 100,000 worth of exp, of upgrades at the wastewater plant, that's 600 plus whatever the engineering ultimately turns out to be, I don't have that number in front of me. But, um, I can tell you that when they realized that they had to rebid the project, the engineer did take a significant haircut on his incremental increased costs after discussing it with the, with the Water and Sewer Commission. It was agreed that that would basically cut in half what their additional cost was gonna be. Um, so, I don't have a bottom line for you, but I can tell you that these are very good numbers. I can also tell you that it appears, because of the delay, we are now in a new fiscal year, and in this new fiscal year, apparently the state has additional subsidy to provide to projects just being funded now. And so perhaps the delay will work in our favor to the tune of maybe $100,000 or $200,000 in savings against these lower pricing. So we, that remains to be seen, but we wanna lock that in ASAP, so.
You know, this, scaling this back, like we're doing, is that gonna cause us some heartburn two years down the road?
Well, I think the main thing is to replace these aging pump stations.
Right.
So that will be accomplished. We thought that we might see some, you know, engine, some electrical savings, um, by having one pump station, 'cause there's less maintenance with one than with two, but I think when we saw how big the pump would have to be to pump all the way up from the bottom of the hill, it got way too expensive, and that's why we had to rebid it.
Well, the lines would've had to been changed...
That's right, that's right.
To accommodate the bigger pumping station.
That's right, that's right.
But I hope that 10 years from now, we don't have to go back and put bigger lines in and redo some of this.
I think we've been told that these new pump stations have a lifespan in the, in the order of 30 to 50 years, and so...
No, I think, well, Joe, is, what if we were to add, is there, is there room in these pump stations for expansion? I think that's what he's trying, there is, okay.
Yes, yes.
That, I think was what he was trying to ask, if we added, because it would be nice for the sewer people that are paying to have more customers to lower their costs.
Oh, yeah.
You're gonna have, you're gonna, things are gonna increase, I mean, you're gonna have some growth, like it or not, somewhere.
Well, Dave, Dave will tell you that the, that the village is pretty well built out, but if, if we have other neighbor huts, like, for example, we talk about Toronzo and Pine Woods, for example, hooking onto the system?
Yeah.
Or the real silver bullet would be expansion, further expansion at the academy. And that's where Butch Shaw comes in handy, because every time they talk about more dorm space, Butch blows off the dust off of his speech about how they should hook into the town sewer system, right, Butch? He's not even there.
I know, but he's...
They were interested, and they paid...
Yes.
For quite a few years, they reserved...
They paid $125,000.
They reserved space.
Right.
Then they backed away from it, the town may not like abandon it for a while, except...
They paid us $125,000 for...
Except the Furnace Road, the Furnace Road would've been greatly improved.
Yeah.
They've got subject tanks out there along the Furnace Road, and they're, they've got a mess out there, yeah, they're in big trouble.
Yeah.
Well, I don't know if someone's saying big trouble, but they've got problems that would've been picked up had that happened. And maybe someday the town will have to go pick them up on the Furnace Road.
That's a proposition.
Whether the Fleet's Academy is a part of it or not.
One thing we did recently was, we replaced the whole line down Randall Park.
Yeah.
Um, the, um, the water line, 'cause that was so frail and it had fallen apart every year. So it gives you an idea of, the, the infrastructure's not great.
Problem out there is that, that would have to be so deep, you'd have to put a pump station in to get to Route 7.
Yeah.
And that's where your money goes, that's, that's, that was a huge cost.
Yeah. As we just saw, pump stations.
This damn Route 7 upgrade is gonna be a big deal for the town, because we don't even know whether they're gonna pay for our, the interfr, you know, the lines and stuff that are gonna have to be put in. That's all up in the air, as far as I know. It's a whole different deal between Fitz and Brandon.
Right, they own Route 7.
All right, we don't have to track here.
But that's another, another...
We'll discuss that one some other time, Joe. I think that's the end of our open meeting business.
Sure is.